Good afternoon. I called over the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 24th, 2018. Thank you all for coming. We have two items on today's agenda. The first is the Skyline Court street naming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the plat here that shows the new street name of Skyline Court. This is some housing that Liberty is going to be constructing for some of their faculty, I guess, some staff. New street names are required to come before the Planning Commission for comment. It's not a public hearing, so if you have any concerns, we would pass those on to council. No concerns?
No.
All right.
So for these, not being a public meeting, is this FYI, do we still make a motion and recommendation?
You actually don't have to make a recommendation.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So, any comments on that? All right, thank you.
Shortest item ever.
Yeah. Wish they could all be that quick. Our second item is our first true public meeting item. And just a reminder, as we start this, we do have time constraints. Presenters get 10 minutes, opposition groups get 10, and individuals get three. We've got a timer up front, and these are to make sure everyone gets a fair opportunity to express their support or concerns. So, our item is the petition of Virginia Seminary, Virginia University of Lynchburg to remove the campus grounds at 2057 Garfield Avenue, more specifically, the area surrounding Graham Hall and Mary Jane Ketchelen Memorial Library, approximately 5.92 acres from the Virginia University of Lynchburg Local Historical District to allow future construction on campus without Historic Preservation Commission review. Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of Planning Commission. So, Virginia University of Lynchburg really does have a pretty fascinating history. It's the oldest institution of higher learning in the city of Lynchburg. It was founded both by and for African-Americans just a few decades after the end of slavery. The first classes were held in 1888 on this site in a building looking over the railroad that you'll see in some of the later aerials I'll show. Notable alumni include Ann Spencer, which I'm sure everybody's heard of, being from Lynchburg, and civil rights leader Vernon Johns. On this slide, we have Hayes Hall on the left, which is actually, was demolished in 19, or sorry, in the 80s, I'm not sure exactly what year, and then Humble's Hall here on the right, which does still exist, though it has been modified. So, here on the aerial, this is from 1941, those two buildings I just showed you are here. This is Hayes Hall, which was demolished, and Humble's Hall here. Another building that's contributing to the historic district is here, that's Graham Hall, and then the last one was built in this decade, in the 1940s, and that's going to be the library in this area. So, the historic district was established in 2009, as requested by the university and supported by the Comprehensive Plan. Being in a district requires that COAs or conditional, sorry, certificates of appropriateness, I'm used to saying conditional use permits to you, certificates of appropriateness be approved for all exterior work on the properties designated. There's no fee for getting a COA, and you guys recently recommended approval, and City Council agreed to reduce the application period for getting one, so it's down to just two weeks. It was later added to the Virginia Landmarks Register in 2010, and the National Register of Historic Places in 2011. In the past decade or so, they have received COAs for a number of alterations on the property. So, here's the current district, everything's shown in this teal color. And the state national registers does open up the properties for tax credits, whereas the local district requires design review to all work that they would do on their own. So, here is the proposed reduction, that's outlined in this black line here. And so, basically, all of the campus surrounding two of the three contributing buildings on camp, on campus would be removed from the district and not be subject to design review. These are the buildings today. This is Graham Hall that I showed you in the aerial. Here's the library, constructed in the 40s. This is the Hayes Monument, which is a contributing object to the historic district, and it sits on the site of where Hayes Hall once stood. And it's really this area that ties the three buildings together, so these two to Humble's Hall, which I showed earlier, which would be behind the photographer here. And then I just show this to show the grading that did occur without a permit just south of these two buildings. That's Graham Hall here. And if they, if they were to construct on this property, they would need to get land disturb, sorry, a land disturbance permit and account for that at a later time. So, I did a lot of research on, you know, how it was originally designated, and this was just a quote I pulled from the planner at the time that really kind of got to the heart of why this was being designated. So, it was "to protect the three remaining buildings that have historic and architectural significance from demolition and inappropriate alterations, and ensure that the future development complement the scale and the character and respect the integrity of these historic buildings." And what I gather from that is preserving the setting is just as important as also preserving the buildings. That's part of preserving this entire historic district. The property is zoned R3, so that does mean that they would have to get a conditional use permit for additional construction on campus. However, you don't, when you go through a CUP process, we're not typically reviewing for the aesthetics, and it's also not going to a board that's uniquely equipped to review for aesthetics, like the Historic Preservation Commission. Here's just some aerials of the campus, showing it in 2014, and then today, where the grading occurred here. But you can see Graham, the library, and Humble's here, and then this is where the monument sits, tying the three buildings together. So, the reason we're here today is because the university came to city staff and said, "Hey, we want to put, we might be wanting to put up a new building, what's the process?" And so, the city planner at the time said, "Well, you're in a historic district, it needs a certificate of appropriateness, and to get one, you typically have to follow the design guidelines." And so, the next thing we heard was that the university was just applying to remove themselves from the district. We recommended that they at least go to the Historic Preservation Commission and ask for, okay, what could be approved on campus, but they decided just to move forward with removal from the district. And so, just to close, I'd add that, you know, design review is very important. It ensures appropriate and sensitive construction within that designated area. And like that planner from 2009 said, "It ensures that it'll complement the scale and the character and respect the integrity of a historic site." So, Historic Preservation Commission did recommend denial of this application. They said that, you know, that the whole district is part of the reason it became a district in the first place. It wasn't that it was just a collection of three buildings and a bust, that was the monument. And then they said, you know, "They're really here to help. They're here to help plan an appropriate construction of this, on this campus. They're not there to prevent new construction altogether." So, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer questions following the public hearing.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen, I assume you are here to speak on behalf of the petition, if you wouldn't mind signing in, if you haven't already done so, and then stating your names and positions as well, please.
I will.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan Mickles, and I am a facilities planner at the university, joined by Mr. Jason Randu, who is the chief operating officer at the university. Much of what Ann said is correct. We are looking to remove all but a half an acre from that parcel. We have talked to architects in Lynchburg, we've talked to architects in Charlottesville, Virginia, and we've talked to architects and civil engineers down in the Research Triangle Park in North Carolina. To build on this site would cost two or three times more than what we anticipate. We feel, as a university, that we can construct a facility, or facilities, on our campus that is, or that are aesthetically pleasing and can also perform the functions and the uses that we intend. And I'm not sure, that was a planner quote, I don't, I'm not sure if the council actually approved the historic district based off the planner quote. But we have spoke with, since the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, we have spoke to several members, or several residents of the neighborhood. They are in full support to help them understand what we're, what we're dealing with, with the historic boundary. Basically said, "What if you could not, what if you had to repair a window in your home, and you couldn't, you didn't have the money to repair the window, but you wanted to repair the window, but you had to do it based off what four people had said?" To put it in that perspective, they understood. But we do intend to speak with others in the neighborhood up until, up until the council meted in December 11th. What we're envisioning at this point is a 13,000-square-foot facility that would primarily be a wellness center. There is a gymnasium that we are, that would be enclosed with a basketball, a couple of basketball hoops, but there will be classrooms and some office space. I actually have a picture here of Pleasant Valley Church, which is here in Lynchburg. It's a pre-engineered, prefabricated building that is not the sheet metal that was being referred to in the Historic Preservation Committee, just to give the Planning Commission, and then ultimately the council, an idea of what direction we intend to go. Mr. Randu just brought up a good point, something that was mentioned at the HBC meeting. We are the only university in Lynchburg that 100% of its campus is in a historic district. No other college or university in this area is completely in a historic district.
If we need to, yeah, we can just look at it.
Sure. Again, this is Pleasant Valley Baptist Church in Lynchburg, Virginia. And, as I mentioned before, the cost from what we've talked to with licensed professionals, the cost to build in the historic district using whatever guidelines are put before us would cost two to three times more than what we would like to spend. And the neighborhoods in full support, or the folks that we talked to, they're in full support of what we're trying to do. We will continue to talk to them as the council meeting approaches in December. And I'll open it up to anyone, not knowing the Roberts rules, I'll open up to anyone of you all who have questions.
Well, we might be calling you back up. We're going to give other folks here the opportunity to speak as well.
Sure.
So, thank you very much. So, at this point, are there members of the public who would like to speak in favor of this petition?
I'd like to say...
Oh, yes, ma'am, come on up, please, and if you guys could just maybe take a seat back and let her sign in and state her name, just so we get her for the record.
I'm just here as a public member and as part of the VUL to support the progression of Lynchburg's only HBCU. And I think we'd speak highly of our city if we could take their proposals under consideration.
Okay, great, thank you. Can you also just state your name and the mic, please?
Delthing Mickles.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? State your name and have it signed in, please.
My name is Carlton Jackson, I'm on the faculty at VUL and also pastor of Pleasant Valley Baptist Church, where we took the metal building and wrapped it so that it would be aesthetic and be, you know, a beautiful building. And I think that's what our idea here is to do, is to make it the most attractive so that it will be part of the community as well. Plus, you know, our student body, we want to grow, and the only way we can grow is that we've got to have some bases for the students and for student activity. So, as we can, out of favor of being able to remove that historic district and be able to build some buildings so that our campus can expand.
All right, thank you, sir. Others in favor?
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Morton, and I am a concerned citizen, and I also am part of the VUL family. But as a Lynchburg resident, I do not believe that constructing the building that has been proposed would detract from the neighborhood. The aesthetics may not be what the Historic Society has looked at from its previous implementations, but I believe firmly that this would not detract from, but it would allow future growth for the university and the surrounding citizens. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone against this petition? All right, at this point, the public hearing is closed, and we'll open it up to questions and discussion points. And one thing, Anne, I think would be helpful for me to understand, the typical process, if this was to happen under the current designation, they take a proposal to the Historic Preservation Commission, if it gets approved, it then goes to planning, or that's where it's done at that point?
So, if you're in a historic district, all exterior work to your property needs to get approval from the HBC. That's it.
That's it.
There actually are two types of approvals. If it was simple replacing in kind, like I've got wood siding on my house, and I need to repair that wood siding or replace that wood siding, actually, I would approve that as a staff member, and that only takes a couple of days. If it's a change where I want to go from wood siding to vinyl siding, I would then, as a staff member, direct them to the HBC for approval on that. And HBC would then have their hearing, and they usually, they usually try and discuss with the property owners, you know, whether or not that's really the best option, or if they'd be willing to do something else. And so, I think I said during my presentation, the process is really, it's really simple. You submit an application, the deadline is two weeks before the monthly meetings for HBC, and then you go before HBC for approval. Sometimes, for bigger projects, it might take one or two, one, two, or three meetings. I think they, HBC specifically talked about a scenario on Rivermont Avenue that did take three meetings, but everybody at the end of the project was much happier with where it ended up, with the, working together with HBC to come up with the best solution for that property.
And is there an appeal process?
There is an appeal process. You have, I think it's 15 days after a denial to then appeal it to city council. And we did add that you have to advertise that you're appealing, because basically you're saying, "I don't want to be subject to these guidelines that everybody else is subject to." And so, you do have to advertise that, but then there's a public hearing that goes straight to city council.
So, council could be involved as the final say-so on it?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
It seems to me that it's not necessarily the process that VUL is, the process of going in front of the Historic Preservation Committee, that doesn't really seem to be the problem. It's more of the financial concerns of what the Historical Committee could require. And I guess, what I'm curious, like, just as an example of this building that you've bought forward, that the church has done, would the Historical Committee approve a prefab building such as this? Is that something that they would consider?
I don't know, without them actually seeing that building.
Did that come up in your discussions with the Historical?
No, so that building was not presented to the Historic Preservation Commission, so really, I don't know. I don't think they'd be opposed to the fact that it's prefab. They are more concerned with the massing and scale, and that the elements kind of work with the existing buildings and existing setting. But really, the answer is, I don't know.
Yeah, the impression that I got was that they were opposed to pre-engineered buildings. That's the impression that I got. The university is also concerned about the process, you know, Ann mentioned three meetings, three meetings, that's, that could be three months. And then, on top of that, we have to pay for any public notices that go out. So, the process can get drawn out significantly, just at a HPC level. So, there's a design component, but there's also a process. And three meetings, three meetings could take three months.
Public notices for getting a certificate of appropriateness.
Thank you for clarifying.
But if this was not an historic designation, because it's R3, they would need a...
They would need a conditional use permit, yes.
Which would require paying for a public...
Correct.
Announcement.
Yes, yes.
Because it would come to us.
Because that would come to Planning Commission and City Council for approval. But that's, changing that is not before you today.
No, I know, but I'm just looking at the whole picture. Whatever, whatever they're proposing, it's either got to go through HPC or through the Planning Commission.
Really, both. So, let's say they stay in a historic district, and they want to build a new athletic facility. It would need to go to both HPC for the design review, to see how it fits within a historic district and the historic context, and then it would go to Planning Commission and City Council for review of other impacts and whether or not it really fits.
And without the historic designation, it would still come to us for a CUP, and I know you mentioned in the write-up, we don't necessarily consider the aesthetics as much as the appropriateness of the request.
Right. Right, I don't believe that's, aesthetics is listed as an approval criteria in the zoning ordinance for conditional use permits.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is, with or without the historical designation, things are not suddenly becoming open-ended in terms of being able to do projects like this.
True.
It's just the consideration is shifted a little bit.
It's the consideration of the historic context that wouldn't be reviewed anymore.
But, and petitioning process is actually cheaper as a historical district, because it's free.
It's free. Right, well, both processes would stay in place.
Yes.
But, yeah, the COA process has no fee.
Right, okay, but they would still, yep, okay.
Is there any background, I've been flipped, is there any background on why, I believe it was Mr. Revis, and the VUL sought historical?
You know, I think they recognized that history of the campus and its significance in Lynchburg, and they had a vision at the time for how the campus would develop, and that's all I can really add to that, as far as insight into why. I would reiterate that HBC was saying, "Well, we're here to help you. We're here to help with the development of this campus. You want it to be, you want it to develop sensitively and really preserve your history as you develop." So, they're not there to prevent it, they're there to help.
Let me just ask, I'm sorry, go ahead, you've been trying to talk for a while, I'm sorry.
I would just like to add that there were some folks at the university that was not aware that the land was actually designated historic. It was, there was some thinking that it was perhaps just the building itself. I can't speak for Dr. Revis or the committee that chose to do this, but I think that it did come as a surprise to some that the parcel, the land, was actually designated historic.
I thought I knew the answer to this question when I got here, but now I'm confused. You took this plan that we looked at today to the Historical Foundation, did you not?
That is correct. I don't think, not all the items that we had, but for the most part, this is the correct.
With the exception of the, with the exception of the picture that you showed of the church, everything else pretty much went through it.
Everything on this slide, Joe, like this, this concept plan from VUL, that went to HPC. They did not see the picture of the prefabricated building.
Okay.
They had this one, which I believe was just a metal clad.
I'm not sure how that slide got in there.
There is a one.
Right, right, sorry, the meeting was not to review a building at all.
Okay.
The meeting that HPC had was what you're doing today, was a public hearing just to remove the district.
That's what I saw.
They did not have a building to review.
That's what I saw.
And there are two dorms that you didn't show pictures of, which look tremendously different than the houses, or the buildings that were, that were, that are truly historic. I mean, they're built in the 70s and look more like a motel.
Right, so they were built before the district was established.
Right. But I would say that, to me, they're not aesthetically the same as the three buildings on the other side. There aren't, there are no pictures of that.
Yeah, I don't have any pictures of those, but there is.
Yeah, I know, I saw that today, I know exactly where you took.
So, I'd like to ask, you know, and I can address, address you all, you know, have you considered, actually living in a historic district, have you considered putting together a plan and taking it to the HPC, just to, just to see, being in construction and being in that district, you know, I just wonder if that, if that isn't a bad option, you know, I think when we look at something like this, I think the question, you know, it's a much larger scope than, than what might be necessary if, if they could work with you. And it, more of a question, I don't know if that's been considered. I know some people say, "What's too expensive," but, but on the other hand, you know, maybe there are some options that work.
Yeah, you know, I was just talking to Mr. Randu. We are not opposed to getting feedback from the HPC, it's just that we don't want that feedback to be what determines how we build. You know, we are dealing with limited funds, and like I said, we've talked to some professionals, both architects and civil engineers, and they all agree, or they all state that we're looking at costs two to three times higher than if we go to some other alternative. So, we're not opposed to hearing feedback, but for that feedback to go on record and for that to be the determining factor of how we build and construct on that, on that parcel, that's what, that's what really drives us for the reduction.
So, I will add simply, I have a thought. The dorm that was approved in 2011 but never constructed, that was also a prefab building. It had a brick facade.
It was approved by HPC.
It was.
Can you throw a A5, please, the 2010 nomination form, please?
This is for the National Register.
Yeah, it has a map down at the bottom. Yeah.
This one?
No, go up some, please. It had, annotated an arrow drawn to the side. I'm not too sure which page it was.
I think that was at the very end.
This one is just sideways, I can rotate it.
No, there's one more, because it shows buildings, it's an old UTM map.
It's the very, very end.
No, there's, keep on going, right there, that one.
This one.
Maybe the cursor, just hang it right there, okay. Those buildings, that was the request for, as I understand reading it, that was the request for the original historical designation?
This map specifically was prepared for the National Register.
Okay.
But, yes.
So, what happened to the rest of those buildings? Was there a...
So, this was Hayes Hall that was demolished in the 80s. So, these maps are just, I forget what, what's the source, do you know, Rachel?
It looks like a USGS.
USGS map, and so, the maps are out of date. So, this was Hayes Hall, this was another dorm that was demolished. And I think the other ones exist.
Okay, so those were never there at the time of the designation, those uses were afforded.
This might be a silly question, are there any tax credits, being in a historical, I mean, I know you get historical tax credits for, for buildings that are, are standing, but do you get any, any type of tax benefits for new construction in a historical area?
Not that I'm aware of, definitely not for the local district, which is what you're reviewing. The state national would stay in place, and that's what opens you up for tax credits.
And Anne, if you don't mind, could you go back to the concept plan real quick, please? That was on the other, the other document.
Oh, thank you.
A, A3B. Yeah, so, just to clarify, the stuff that would be removed is to the right, and then the little block up, or the, and what looks like a ballpark would be left alone?
The outline part is what's removed.
Yeah, so the black outline is showing what would stay in the district. So, you have these two buildings here.
Right.
And then the dorms, and then Humble's, and then this. All of, the rest of this parcel would be removed, which includes that monument of the second president of the university, Mr. Hayes.
Yeah.
And we would relocate that monument, as that parcel develops, we would find a, a central point or a focus point.
So, as clarification, a CUP that would, would come before us if it were... So, as clarification, a CUP that would, would come before us if, if it were removed and just, you know, if there, if, if the area was removed and they had to bring forward a CUP, there would be no say-so in what they put up, correct?
General size and massing, if there were external impacts from that, if they were going to build a skyscraper, uh, you might, there'd be reason to perhaps deny that. But yeah, you would not review for aesthetics.
I actually think there's almost more limitations without the historical designation, being an R three zoning. Um, if you're proposing, uh, a, a major building with a whole bunch of different activities, I'm not sure that would fit into an R three zoning. But by being designated historical, you're removed from that.
That's, yeah, that's, that's kind of what-
I, I think you're almost moving into more, more restrictions without the historical designation. Because I'm not sure if this, what you're proposing were to come before us as a CUP in an R three zoning, I'm not convinced we would approve it or recommend approval.
The way I look at it is, is this, because I'm, I'm struggling too. This is a unique property. There's, it's, it, all of us are aware of the challenges that are involved with having a, and sustaining an educational environment. From the number of students to what kind of facilities, I mean, the whole, the list is there. And there's no question that that's difficult in every single portion of your, whether, quite frankly, whether it be an R three or whether it be a historical district, your hand to some degree are tied. I'm very, I, I struggle with that.
Yeah.
The other thing though, that I will say, that the other half of that, the dark side of that piece is this. And this, the reason I'm saying it now is because I think this ties to what, um, Chair Peralt just brought up. And that is, anytime we look at a city, this is going to sound bad, okay? So let's take this as a one-sided thing, like I don't know how else to put this, it's not going to sound like it's self-serving. I think we would look at it more favorably had it been reviewed by, by the historical preservation because now it's become part of a package, if you will. Okay? Now, I don't mean that, please understand, I want to be as clear as I possibly can. I did not say, unless you get this approved by the, by the Historical Society, we ain't going to look at it. Please understand that it just came in the wrong place. But I do think that would, I do think that at least in my mind, that would help. The other piece though, and the more important piece is, in my mind, having never taken this idea, which I don't think is a bad idea at all, to the historical group, I'm concerned about putting us and the, and the, and the, and the process, um, at, at risk. I don't, I think to take it through and they said, no, you can't do it because of X, Y, and Z, and you come back and say, you know, and run through the regular appeal, I look at that differently. I don't want us to, I don't think this, the purpose of this body is not to be the appeal almost before you actually present it, group, if, if that makes sense. And that's, those are the two horns, those are the two horns of the dilemma I'm, I'm sort of, I'm sort of fooling with. Do that-
Yeah, sure, Commissioner, and I'll try to address some of your points here. Um, yeah, we are full aware that this is R three zoning. And we, uh, if I read correctly, we have a height, uh, restriction of forty feet for R three. So that's, that serves our purpose. Uh, two, we'd look at size and scale. Uh, you know, we would be happy to do a floor area ratio on this parcel. And I guarantee you, whatever we build out there would match the floor area ratio for the properties that surround it. Uh, so we would be, from a quantitative way of looking at this, uh, floor area ratio, uh, we, we would still be, uh, uh, well in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and I want to reiterate too, that it was the university that came to the city to ask to be in this historic, uh, district. Um, with Anne mentioning the history, it wasn't the city that came to us and asked us, you know, because of your rich history, can we, can we include you all in our historic district zone? It was us. So, uh, while we appreciate the research, uh, again, it was us. And we are full aware of our three zoning regulations. I do want to point out that I believe Liberty University is the only institution that has a, a, a zoning, uh, almost like its own zoning classification. Lynchburg College and I believe maybe Randolph College or Randolph Makin? Yeah, I, I believe they are, uh, or some parts of their campus is considered R three or residential. It's not, it's not, uh, whatever the classification that Liberty has. So there are colleges that, that do build, uh, in non-college, uh, like zoning.
Yeah, I'd love to jump in. Um, yes, VUL asked for the designation in 2009. Um, however, they did so with the forethought that they would like to preserve the character and the architecture on their campus. They had a vision at that time, and that's part of the reason they were asking for it at that time. Um, to prevent a scenario where, you know, a sheet metal building does get built or is proposed to be built. That's not what they're planning to do right now, but it's what they could do.
And I'm not sure that's correct, Anne. Um, I, you're not part of the university, but no, I, I wouldn't say that that's a correct statement, that this was designated specifically or for, uh, or to prevent, uh, a sheet metal building. And again, it's, you know, we consider it a prefabricated, pre-engineered building. Um, but the, the reasoning for the historic district designation was not because we wanted, uh, to preserve the architectural character uh, throughout the university. I think that would be incorrect to say that.
I would, I would think that the pursuit of that was disingenuous, because I think that's what it's for. You know, and that's why I was wondering exactly what the designation is, because I do understand people, I do think people do that specifically for financial gain, and that's not what I'm, you all are doing. I know that developers have actually sought buildings within those districts because they can get money more easily. And so, and that might have been the purpose. And, you know, obviously building a new building, that isn't, um, that isn't possible. But, um, but that, that was why I was asking that. Because I, I wanted to know if there had been benefit, you know, to me, then that's, that's even more troublesome. Um, so, you know, I, I, I wish that we could see something more, like I said, I still believe it would be nice to have something brought before the HPC first and then follow a specific process, much like, I've lived in two districts and I've seen, I've seen neighbors where it's failed too. You know, where they've gone through it and it doesn't work, and they go through the appeal process. And, um, and, and I've been through the process myself. And, you know, in, in my case, it wasn't, it wasn't an onerous cost in, in my case, but it was a much smaller, uh, situation. I, uh, that's what I would like to see, is I would like to see more of the process followed before something more drastic, um, you know, happens like that.
I agree, because there's no going back.
Right, right.
Um, and I, I agree, doing something, uh, and just seeing really more tangibly, these are the, this is what could happen and this won't, this would not happen. Um, and then revisiting this if it was necessary by the petitioner. And, and really my, my take-home stance is, and I, I do see both sides in the, you know, and the question, should an owner be able to change that and remove that for their own property? But for me, what it boils down to, we had two, two, uh, commissions and a division, we had the HPC and the Planning Division, both recommend maintaining historic designation. And in my mind, in the city, those are the two expert groups in this area. And it's hard for me to really recommend overruling that. So in, in my mind, I, I would support their recommendation of, of denying this petition. And, um, and letting, like you said, Tom, seeing how the process works out. And then maybe the petitioners, if things just completely fall apart, they might revisit it.
Yeah, my only retort to that would be, isn't, isn't this a de, a de facto appeals process? We, again, we came, the, the university approached the city for this. We, we got the designation. Now, before any building is constructed, before we've come up with a proposal, we've said, we would like to take control over the design of this building. Uh, so no matter if it was a, it was, if it was faux brick or whether it was, uh, uh, a pre-engineered building, um, th- this is sort of a de facto appeals process, given that the HPC has, has denied it. You know, in some ways, we see this as, you know, four members from Lynchburg that is controlling our, the design of our university, uh, where the students, the faculty, the staff and our board of trustees have very little input or our, or our input or what, or what we can do is so narrow. And again, like I said, we have, we have taken this proposal to, uh, architects and civil engineers, both in Virginia and North Carolina. And they all agree that the cost would be two or three times higher than what we intend to spend on a facility. We, it's, it's in our interest as a university to construct something with good taste, uh, that is aesthetically pleasing for our students and for our, our faculty, um, um, to, to be in. Uh, and like I said, we have, uh, from the members of the, the, the community that we talk to, we, we have their support. They totally, they, they totally understand what we're up against. And we have to put it in a, in a, in a context of, if you wanted to change your windows and you, and you only had a limited amount of funds, this is all that you can do.
Yeah, I, reading through the minutes from the HPC meeting, I mean, um, the, the commissioners and the chair especially, they, I think they really tried to emphasize that they were not a hurdle. They were there to provide guidance and, and assistance and support. And, and we see this with historical designations across the city. And I don't know how often things are shut down because of HPC concerns. My, my take-home is that it doesn't happen very often, that the entities end up working things out with things being better off in the end. And I don't see why this couldn't be a similar situation. And we just haven't seen that happen yet. I mean, we, we need to, we need to see what happens with it.
And I think if we, you know, if we just, if we say, this is fine, we'll do this. I think, and then we run into multiple other districts where people then can do the same thing and say, well, we want this part cut out because we want to do this on it. And I think, I think as, as citizens together, you know, at the social contract that we will kind of follow those standards, I think that's one of the things that we owe other people within other districts as well. You know, as to, you know, there are people who have actually lived in districts and have had, had to absorb a lot of cost. And people, some people can't afford it, you know, to, to do improvements like siding. Like I remember one where siding was pulled off of a house and it sat there without anything for a couple of years while they saved money up to put Hardy Board up. You know, things like that. So I think that, I think that, that, that's another, just another question, that we open that can up if we just say, yep, we're going to support this. You know, and that's, that's a difficult one. I, I don't want to stomach that.
Well, I mean, and, you know, anyone who, who's, who's in a, currently in a historic district, yeah, they feel like that they would like to be removed. I mean, we are the original petitioners, um, and I understand what you're saying in your example. But we were the original petitioners for the historic district. Uh, and, uh, now we would just like a, a reduction in it. And I feel that if there's, if there's a property owner and if they had petitioned, uh, the City Council for a designation and then they wanted to have it removed, uh, they should have the right to. Now, whether or not that property owner who requested the designation, he leaves and then someone else buys the home and wants to do it, that's, that's a different matter. But, uh, we are the original petitioners. Um, and like I said, we are the only university, uh, that has one hundred percent of its campus that's in a historic district. And again, it's being designed, uh, by four, seven members of HPC and it's not letting our student body or our faculty and staff. Uh, it, it narrows our, our input. And our neighbors are aware of, uh, the situation. And we are thankful that we have their support in what we're trying to do. Whether it's, whether the building's a pre-engineered building or whether it's a gymnasium, whether it's a wellness center, where it's just a bunch of classrooms. And again, the, there, there's, there's the cost, but there's also the time. The time of taking plans over and over again to an HPC, uh, to discuss the aesthetics of a building and dragging on for two and three months. And by that time, we're exhausted as staff and then we have to go in front of you guys for another step in the process and then to the council. It's just a need, a needless step when I think the HPC and the university have the same goal. And that is to have aesthetically pleasing facilities within Lynchburg, particularly on our campus.
Can I ask a question, Anne? Anne, if you look at, to pull up the Minnesota, the COA, I mean, or the H, wherever it's, uh, that, the thing there. I, I'm reading a paragraph down here, because you said something about taxes and that's been gnawing at my head. And it's-
What page?
Of course you're going to ask me that.
If you're, if it's about tax credits, that-
Yeah.
Only applies to the state and national district. The local has nothing to do with it.
Uh, I understand that. Um, now I just lost my place. It said, it said, "The campus was designated as a local historic district in 2009 as requested by the university and supported by the comprehensive plan. It was added to the state register in 2010 and the national register in 2011, opening it up for tax credit rehabilitation work." What is, what does the, opening it up for tax credit rehabilitation work mean in a simple language?
So they could apply for tax credits from the state and federal government. Um, I believe the state is twenty-five percent back of eligible expenses and the federal is twenty. So you can get back forty-five percent of your eligible expenses that work on historic rehabilitation, so-
For rehabbing, not for new construction.
Right. I, I, I'm not an expert in tax credit work, but I believe it's just the rehab work, not new construction.
Okay. But, um, let me, that's in 2009. So since then, they have done, but that, all the, okay, just because other things they've done have been outside historic area. Modifications they've done to the buildings, I believe, are outside of the area?
I do not know.
Let's see, two-
Are you talking about the three COAs they did get?
Yes.
Oh, those, so the COAs are within the historic area.
They were.
Yeah, you only get a COA if you're in a local district.
So, so they actually receive tax credits.
No, 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 no. Um, COAs are related to the local district.
Okay.
Local district only.
But the, but the tax breaks they got?
I have no idea if they got tax credits or not. That's handled through Department of Historic Resources in Richmond. Um, the COAs are only for a local district. Um, and that's what our, our Lynchburg Historic Preservation Commission approved.
So were you here in 2011 for the new dorm?
No, that was before my tenure.
Do you, do you recall or have you seen the plan that was put forth to the Historic Committee at that point and?
Uh, no, but I'd be happy to go back and check.
I'm just wondering if they, what they approved then and, and if it was, you know, i- if, if that's, if you put that forward back then and why you didn't go through it and I, you know, I mean, I know that was seven years ago, but, or eight years ago, but I just was curious. I mean, I, I, there's part of me that does believe that when you, when the VUL asked for the historic, um, change, that, that they possibly were just thinking it was going to be the buildings to prevent further destruction or demolition of the buildings and, and possibly didn't necessarily think that they would run into the, these issues when, and, and I want you guys to grow, I mean, I know kids from glass that have gone there and played football and, and, you know, I, I want to see the campus grow and, and to have more students and, and I want that more than anything. But are you adverse to trying it? Just, because I have a feeling I'm in the minority here. So like if, if you did come up with a plan and just bring it to the, the historic preservation, just see, and, and do this and see what happens. And, and if they say no, and if it looks like it's going to be, I feel like you would have more, more, um, backing coming in here and asking for us to change it. You know, as opposed to what, what we're discussing now. Because, like I said, I think I'm in the minority, so I, but I, would you be willing to do that and?
Well, Anne-
I mean, I think you might have to, but-
You have a good point, Commissioner Johnson. I know that's been echoed here. Uh, like I said, it becomes, uh, a cost. You know, we, we, you know, we're thinking Pleasant Valley and how that building was designed and constructed and, and the, the aesthetics of that building. But we don't want to be held to that, uh, either. My impression from that meeting was that, and it was called, I don't know if it's by staff or by an HPC member, it was called a sheet metal building or a metal- staff or by an HPC member, it was called a sheet metal building, or a metal building, just that language turned them off in the sense that they didn't want to approve anything other than perhaps brick or mortar. And, like I said, there's a time component where, you know, you go two, three meetings, that's three months, and you still may not have headway. And like I said, we have a student body that would like to have input, student government that would like to have input, we have faculty and staff that would like to have input. And to narrow that to just a few materials, and how we can do it, I think really limits our growth. At the same time, we can't continue to build with the same square footage that's currently out there with Graham and Mary Jane. You'll just have a bunch of little cottages that look like a village. So, yeah, there's a cost, and there's a time component. And like I said, my impression from the HPC meeting was that a pre-engineered building, even one that may look like that of Pleasant Valley Baptist Church, would not be approved in their purview.
When I look at these plans, I mean, they're, yeah, very obviously just a sheet metal shell building, and that's, and I understand what you're saying, and you can clad these. I really do think that, given different information, I know you can build things like this in historic districts with proper cover, you know, they don't build buildings with, you know, four bricks wide anymore, going up like old historic buildings. So, you know, I think, and you might be right, maybe they saw that, and that was kind of boom, the automatic turn off. I'm looking at, it says McKees Rocks, Pennsylvania, Olympia Steel Building. I think that it's probably just a takeoff of another sized building without any of the exterior treatment. And I do think you can make a nice building with a nice exterior treatment. So, that's one of the things, that's where I, I mean exactly what was just being said, is that I really think that process, I think that it's a good time to look for partners, and not, you know, and maybe see what can transpire by actually trying to go through the process, you know, not being a, you know, not fighting it, and not feeling like, well, everybody's kind of piling on, and they don't want this, but actually maybe being able to do something really unique within, within your area, and making it an opportunity instead of a problem.
And, you know, you raise a good point, Commissioner Rogers, I would say this too. In some ways, walking into the HPC meeting, essentially, you're telling the HPC that "We like your work, but we don't want your work happening on our property." So, that could be offensive in some ways, and I can understand that, and I'm sure that they've done good work around the city of Lynchburg. I just know that from our student body, and our faculty, and our administration, that we can design, and it's in our interest to design aesthetically pleasing buildings. And again, to go back to HPC, you know, this is just one building. Suppose we want to build somewhere else, not even on this parcel, but on some other property, then again, we have to go in front of them when we can just go straight forward to the planning commission and into the council. So, in some ways, going into that meeting two weeks ago, it was almost like telling, in my mind, telling the Historic Preservation Committee, "You do a good job, but we just don't want you to do your job on our property." And we are happy to get input from them. They're more than welcome to attend the city council meetings when these buildings get erected. We're more than happy to have their input. It's just that it's not necessary in our eyes, that they control our design process from the very beginning.
But then, on the other hand, you can actually get tax credits to rehab everything within the district that you want to keep, which then, that would be, that would not be a fair, a fair, a fair statement, you see?
Right, and in some ways too, as I believe Ann mentioned, you know, this is just for the local designation. There has not been any discussion, well, we've talked about it, but not at length, about keeping the state and the national designation. And again, if we do keep the state and national designation, we still have all the tools for tax credits. Being in a local, whether we're in it or not, in a local historic district, the tax credit issue doesn't surface. It's only the aesthetics and the design of our facilities. And then, of course, new construction doesn't apply.
You say something, again, differentiating between local, state, and federal. So, you'd be retaining the state and federal historic district designation?
Possibly. We have not had an extensive conversation at the university about that, but I can't, I could see where we possibly would keep a state and federal designation, probably for what, for the areas we have, you know, we're showing to keep the boundary. Now, whether the state and national is retained, are retained on the part we want to remove, I'm not sure if that's the thinking, but we do intend to keep the state and national within the boundary that we have proposed.
I mean, part of me, when I look at what's being left, a lot of that is not really, I mean, you're losing the main character that made it historical, like the dorms being kept, that doesn't, to me, that's not the historical component.
Well, the other thing that concerns me, I apologize, I recognize. So, what would the state and federal people say? I mean, when we chop three-fourths of the area off?
I've talked to them.
Yeah, I don't think they would automatically remove it, because it's being removed from the local district. They do have guidelines generally on how to draw district boundaries, and that it should be kind of a contiguous area to actually be a district. The way it's being drawn now, I'd say it's more like it's just a collection of buildings now. You're losing that character. But DHR is not actively going out there and redrawing their own boundaries.
Any other thoughts or considerations?
Talking about Randolph College, you know, when I was reading the minutes, and I think there was a question asked in that meeting about the historical district of Randolph College, and it's really just what fronts Rivermont, correct?
So, Randolph was included in the Rivermont Avenue historic district, so that district is about Rivermont Avenue, and it's fronting on that. That's the reason it was designated that way, because what was historic was the whole development up Rivermont Avenue, coming from downtown. Whereas here, the reason it was designated was as a historical campus, in its own history on its own.
What about Lynchburg College? I saw in the minutes, I think.
They have a collection of buildings, might even just be one or two. Hopwood Hall, I know, is designated there as a local district, yeah. There are, so there are districts around the city, and then there are individually designated buildings, like the Academy Theater is an individually designated building.
And you feel that this is not, and I understand that it was given, you know, that they asked for it so many years ago, and it was given to them, but you feel like in this instance, that this shouldn't be like Lynchburg College, whereas the buildings that are, that truly were original buildings should only be the historical places. You feel like it is?
Well, I think Lynchburg College would certainly be eligible to be a district too, if they were to come forward and ask for it. I don't know if that's the appropriate protection on Lynchburg College, but that's not what's before you today. My main concern is really removing this area right front and center in campus, which is what really connects the three contributing buildings together, and it removes the Hayes Monument in the center there, so that would no longer be protected. So, that would be my main concern, that, yeah, it's no longer a campus that's designated as a historic district.
Well, what if you redid the line to include that front corner with the statue, and then had a, I mean, would that be something?
And we've talked about that, Commissioner Johnson. You know, that statue can be removed. When Hayes Hall was originally, before it got demolished, that statue didn't exist at that location. And like I said, as the university continues to grow, we will have a focal point, a center point, much like UVA has the Rotunda. We will have a focal point, a center point, that represents the campus. Right now, a bust of President Hayes there, I mean, that can be removed. But we have, you know, we thought about, you know, what if we included everything from Graham Hall east to Garfield? But this is the, this is the boundary that we decided that we would like to go with. And we do look to relocate that statue in a more appropriate area.
So, I'm not saying that the statue needs to be preserved in that location going forward in perpetuity. I'm saying that this land is very important to the context of these historic buildings, and that's why design review would be important for that area specifically. It's the approach as into campus, and that's where HPC could help them design a building that would be, that would relate to the historic context.
The building that they're proposing, that's going to go down in the bottom corner, or where?
Yes, sir. So, I.
Can we, Cho?
Sure.
Please.
So, according to the zoning regulations, myself, Tom, here, we understand if we go with the gymnasium, that we have to be 200 feet back from any residential line. So, if this wellness center, which is what we're calling it, if it's classified as a gymnasium, you're looking at pretty much back here will be the setback from the width, and then, I believe, 30 feet from the western railroad belt. So, you're looking at this area here. And I'm not sure what constitutes what the facility, the gym, you know, there is a basketball gym inside, but we do plan for classrooms, office space, so maybe a gymnasium is probably not the correct function of that building.
I mean, I hate to keep talking about it. I mean, I just know there are other schools that have issues with, you know, that put up trailers, and you know what I mean, to take care of overflow, and I'm just trying to come up with a compromise if what the planning, the planners and the historical society is concerned with keeping some continuity and having a designated area instead of it being so convoluted, would it work to have the line shoot, you know, to that corner, so that you have like a whole, right, you know, you have a whole space there, and then possibly the area that you want to, you know, to be able to make your gym and do your other things, take that out of the historical district, so that you could have some more flexibility in, as far as financially, what you want to do?
Yeah, you know, Commissioner Johnson, you know, who knows what the future is for that side east of, or where that statue is located? You know, we don't want to have to come back, you know, three, four years from now, if we do decide to redevelop that area and say, "Whoops, we had an opportunity to take this out back in 2018, and we didn't do it, and now we've got, and now we've got this block that we have to deal with when we try to construct on possibly that end of the parcel." You know, maybe a historic district is not the appropriate way that we should go about it. Maybe it's much like Lynchburg College, where there's just, and I think that's exactly what we're trying to do, as a matter of fact. You know, if it's just Tumble's Hall, and Graham, and Mary Jane, and the dormitories, then that's it. I mean, maybe it's not necessarily a district as it is just historical properties. And again, like I said, it's a cost issue. We've talked to architects, civil engineers, two, three times the cost, and then there's a time issue with just going through the process, going through the hurdles. And we have a student body who's, that's enthusiastic about what's being proposed, what's being planned, they would like to have input. We have a student government that would like to have input. We've got our faculty and staff members who would like to have input. But your point is, I mean, your point is well-taken, but I think what that does, if we don't, if we don't do this now, then they're going to wonder why, if we come back three or four years from now, if we do want to develop on that other end, why we didn't do it then or now.
Any other thoughts?
I'm still trying to visualize how you could put that building there. If you drew a line from Halifax up to the curb railroad tracks and come over to Kelly Street, and take that area, that rectangle that's left there, leave that as historic district, and free up the rest of that area, why that building could not fit in that area, that's outside of that?
I think, I think what we're hearing is that there's not. Any interest in doing that, period.
It's either.
So, it's like, I don't think they're saying it can't be done, I think they're saying they don't want to do that.
Yeah, this is.
You see what I'm saying? It's not a, right? It's not like, it's not like, you don't, you don't want that quad area in the historic district. You want it looking just the way you drew, so there's no compromise question, is what you're saying. There's no chance of that.
Yeah, that's correct, but I say that because if there is future development to the east of, or just south of Garfield, if there is development in that sort of quadrant area, you know, we don't want to have to go through this three, four years and say, "Well, you had an opportunity, why did you go back and..." I mean, yeah, for us, it's simple. We've got, you know, the neighborhood support, they're with us, we've got, you know, we've got the staff at the university that can design and can make a decision on what type of facility and the aesthetics. You know, we don't want to have to go through a lengthy process looking at design options. And again, it's the cost component, just from talking with the various architects and civil engineers. And, you know, we plan to bring forward the names of the neighbors that we've spoken to already, and we'll continue to speak to others.
I, yeah, I don't think that it's. You know, I think talking to engineers and planners is different than actually having a proposal from them and saying, "We can't afford this." And I think because of that, I can't vote to support this proposal, because I feel like there's things that could be done, that could have already been done, to say, "This is untenable, so how do we move forward?" That's kind of how I feel.
Yeah.
Well, I think we've covered all the aspects.
Yeah.
We can probably move forward with a motion, one way or the other, if someone wants to make one. And so, the petition was to remove historical designation for this property, for that part of the property.
I'll move that we deny the promotion proposal.
Second.
Second. So, the motion is to recommend denial to council. All in favor of that recommendation?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we are recommending denial, but again, city council makes the final decision, and so, we encourage you to revisit this with them, and wish you luck with that. So, thank you for taking the time to meet with us and share all of your input.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Any other items, not on the agenda? All right, well, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.